Thank you for joining us for this Local Decision 2016 Candidate Spotlight. I'm Ben Hale, sitting down today with Michael Harrison, who is a candidate in the primary election in Inoka County Commissioner District 3. Michael, thanks for being here today.
You're welcome. Glad to be here.
Well, I just want to start by giving you a chance to introduce yourself to the voters, and then tell us why you decided to run for office.
Okay. I'm Michael Harrison. I decided to run for office. One of my children was a victim of sexual assault. A good friend of ours' child got put on the wrong school bus, and when they called the police considering where their child was, the local police told them that they did not know, investigate runaways. And then with this latest fourth grader with sexual assault, I became concerned for child welfare and safety in Inoka County. And as a lobbyist, I've done a lot of work in the Human Services and the Public Safety. And giving all the stuff that I've done down there with what's going on with some of the issues, I thought it was a good opportunity for me to have more of an opportunity to change some things.
Okay. So if you are elected, what do you want to accomplish? What are some goals that you would have?
My first goal mainly is to reform child protection. I think I sat through a lot of the task force meetings across the state that the governor a couple of years ago created. I do not feel that the task force addressed all the issues. They focused more on screening in and screening out of reports and training, where now we're seeing that a lot more reports are being screened in, but now we don't have any place to put children that need services. And, you know, I see now that just a couple of weeks ago, the county board with the non-secured program are creating more beds to meet that. And I think there's a lot more that we need to do just than that, so.
Okay. How would you work to build unity if you were elected and unite your district and the county together?
Well, you know, I tend to be a libertarian, and I feel that in the political sense, yes, I see some things with the Democrat side, I see some things with the Republicans. And I think that's where politicians have gone. They've gone too strong with their beliefs and not listening to the other side. So I would want to try, or would work with all sides and try to come up with the best solution, because government doesn't always come up with the best solutions. And I think that's because they're focused mainly on their stance, instead of listening to the other guy, where if they listen to each other, maybe they could come to a common ground and would come to better solutions than to have a solution that works for a few and not the rest.
Have you always been interested in politics? Is this something that has been kind of building to this point, do you think, for you?
Yes. My mother, when I was, oh, I think about kindergarten, ran for state senate. I remember stuffing envelopes and stuff. I've always had an interest in it. I listened to both national conventions for years. I kind of jogged, because when, 2000, the Gore and Bush debacle, I never went to bed that night. I was waiting up all night, waiting to hear who was winning. And I usually do that every election night, you know, every two years, to see what the final results are. So yes, I've always had a keen interest in politics and law.
Okay. What do you think is the most important issue facing Inoka County going forward?
Like I said, child protection, but there's also, I know I read the Legislative Auditor's Report on Mental Illness, and how mentally ill people are being put in jail. Oftentimes, they're doing, they're because of petty little crimes, and often stay longer than those sentences for those crimes. So I think that mental health is another issue that's going to be on the rise, and we need to hopefully come with better solutions for those folks and help them, you know, get over their mental health issues.
How would you communicate with your constituents if you were elected? That's one of the most important things for politicians, is their constituents want to be able to talk to them. How would you communicate?
I would try, I would encourage them to either phone call or email. I think those are very, email, which is a nice spot, is you can, anytime of day, you can shoot an email, you know. If I have a busy day and I have some constituents call me or email me, and I can email them back, you know, at 11 o'clock at night. They may not get it till the following morning, but at least they would, I had responded to their concerns. And I would strongly encourage, even if I'm against it or for it or whatever, to come, because I want everybody's ideas to come up with better ideas.
A little bit more on the child protection area, since you said that's really important to you. Are there any things that you would specifically hope to accomplish, or things that you would want to get done in Inoka County specifically in this, in this office?
Specifically, what I would like to see is that we use, go a little more in depth. I know of, like, with drug, people with a drug addiction, there's two types of tests. One, there's a 10-question test, and they make some assumptions. And then there's the other test, I believe it's the DART test, that goes into depth, and it looks at all issues. It looks at, you know, law and stuff. And I would like to, you know, I haven't, I've researched, but I haven't found anything that directly gives that in-depth. And I think that you need to in-depth and look at all issues, you know. If it is child drug addiction of the parent, why the abuse? Maybe there's other reasons. Maybe it could be an uncle, or, you know, a close relative that's the problem and not the parenting. So I would like to see more in-depth research or, what am I trying to say here? Analysis, when they're looking at, you know, what's the problem here, so that we can give the family and the child the best resources available for the problem.
Why should someone vote for you?
I believe that people should vote for me, because I'm a type of person that will listen. When something, a subject comes up, I will research it, I will find it. I will not basically let my stance be in the way of my decisions on stuff. I want to hear other people's points of view, so that we can come up with better solutions.
Well, Michael, thank you for being here today. Taking some time to show us some of your views and introduce yourself to the voters. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. And I want to thank all of you for watching. And remember, you can always head to northmetrotv.com for our complete Local Decision election coverage. All the information is on there for you. And remember, August 9th is the primary, and then November 8th will be the general election. We'll have results for both of those for you here on North Metro TV. Thank you for watching. We'll see you next time. Thank you for joining us for this North Metro TV Local Decision 2016 Candidate Spotlight. I'm sitting down with Commissioner Robin West, who's running for reelection for Inoka County Commissioners in District 3. Robin, thanks for being here today.
Well, thank you for inviting me.
I just want to first start by giving you a chance to reintroduce yourself to the voters and to explain to us why you decided to run for reelection.
Well, I have lived in Blaine for 26 years. I graduated from Inoka High School 46 years ago. I know I'm not old enough to have graduated that long ago. I have four adult sons, married 37 years. We've lived in Inoka County for almost all of the 37 years. I've got almost three daughters-in-law. October will be the third initiation. Six grandchildren, and just loving being a grandma. I have been on the county board since 2007, and currently, you know, as far as my involvement in the community, I am on the Blaine-Ham Lake Rotary. I belong to TPC Rose, which was, is a women's organization that raises money for charity. And last year, we gave Tamarisk, which is an organization that helps families who are going through the end stages of life. $125,000 we raised in a year for them. And this year, Alexandra House is. So I've really enjoyed working in that, and that's something I'll continue to do probably till I have a hard time getting around. I'll just tell you, personally, the most important characteristics that I have and want to have in my life is personal integrity, and care about community, and fiscal responsibility, both personally and as an elected official. And that motivates me to run again. Some people say, you know, you asked the question, I bet you hear very frequently, "I want to make a difference." And I think every person who runs really, truly wants to run to make a difference. But I've had an opportunity to make a big difference, and I'm really proud of that, that today we can be at the same level of our levy that we were in 2010. And I bet if you did a study of the, all counties in the nation, you haven't seen something like that. And we've also paid off $50 million of our debt by not borrowing for the last four years. I'm not saying we'd never borrow, but we take borrowing very seriously, so I just, I want to continue in that vein.
If you are reelected, what's next? What else do you hope to accomplish on the county board for the citizens of Inoka County?
Well, I would like to continue with the same attitude and principles that our leadership team, which I would say, all seven of our county board members feel the same way about what we do. I think transportation is the highest priority, probably, again, in almost any entity that, of government. So we, one of the things that happened that was just amazing is the Armstrong Interchange, and we gave it a name of the Minnesota, Greater Minnesota Gateway, and that is the beginning. Mindot has come up with a plan of a, kind of a hybrid freeway, which you've probably read about and maybe even reported about, that's half the cost of a regular freeway system, but achieves the same thing as far as moving traffic through. And, so that would be my number-one thing. We have also created very innovative ideas, or I shouldn't say "we," our very talented staff, the people who work for Inoka County. And I must say, I had no idea what to expect when I came on board, but we really have some class people. Very, very dedicated, and they take their jobs seriously. But in Human Services, you know, as people are aging, my generation, we just have to make sure that the needs of those who have to have services are met in, according to our mission statement, a very respectful, innovative, and, what is the last term? Oh, fiscally responsible. You know, I talk about that a lot. But, that, so that we cover all, all of our mission statements, but make sure that those people feel cared for and taken care of.
As you look at your past elections, you're, you've been elected a few times now, but not everyone has voted for you every time. Hate to break it to you. You don't get 100% of the vote. How do you work to represent everyone, though? You know, there's people that may disagree with some of your ideas, some of your opinions. How do you still work to make sure that you are building unity in the 3rd District for Inoka County and representing everyone?
Well, you know what we do? That's why, there's a reason it's nonpartisan, is that we are given an assignment by State of Minnesota, and in many areas, the federal government. And we have to achieve the assignment. The way that we have an ability to be different is by how we manage the organization. We want to be fiscally responsible, respectful, and innovative in how we do things. So it's, you know, that's pretty agreeable. And our county board, together, created that mission statement. And we have committees of all different groupings of us, and they're, they overlap, you know. So within the seven elected people, we come to agreement. I would, I've never done a survey of the percentage of our votes, but I would say probably 98% of our votes are unanimous, maybe even more. Once in a while, I mean, recently, I, I and another one of the men voted against something the other five voted for, which was involving raising a fee for nonprofits when they're having outdoor activities. I just disagreed with this. So not many people disagreed with that. And even those who voted for that fee felt like it was necessary, and I was just kind of being a little rebellious. So I don't know if that answers your question, but, you know, we don't, we don't do those controversial issues very often. I would say maybe the biggest one would be trains, but I'll tell you, the area we live in, they don't agree with rail as a transit use. It's not about transit, it's about rail, because rail is stationary and extremely expensive. And we have an example, North Star has been around for a long, long time, and we still, you and I, still pay about 20 bucks every time someone steps up on that. So $40, they get a $40 subsidy every time they go to work, or something in that area. It might be 36 or something, but, so that's something. There's probably disagreement, but constituents-wise, not so much. And, I mean, I don't survey people on that either, but that's probably the most controversial thing that I am not in favor of, and that's just, people elect you because of points of view that you express, and that's what I've been very clear with since the day I started.
How do you work to communicate with your constituents?
Well, you know, my district, I don't get as many letters or phone calls, and I think, I don't, I can't explain why. Maybe it's because I do such a good job. I'm just kidding. But when I do get one, like an email, that's, most people do that, I respond. Most of the questions I get regard city things, because city is more in your face. It's just the nature of that part, kind of government, which I believe city trumps all levels, as far as I'm concerned, because of that. So I will connect them with the city council people who, who can help them, or even staff, but I tend to go through city council and let them connect them, or them deal with their staff. I use social media a lot, and I, when I have an opportunity, I like people, or I invite them to like my county commissioner Facebook page. So that's one way I show. And then I like to give you folks a hard time while I'm in parades and talk at your camera. So.
Last thing for you, real quick. Can you just tell me, simple question, why should someone vote for you?
Because I have proven that I am that personally, that I have personal integrity, follow-through, well, that I'm extremely involved in the community. And I, I go around to different events, people, "Man, I see you wherever I go." Today, I was at Rotary, tomorrow morning is the Blaine, Blaine Business Council, although I have a county board meeting tomorrow morning, so I'll have to slip in and slip out of that. I just go, when there's an event, I make absolutely every effort to go. Last night, I went to the grand opening of Youth First in Ramsey with the TPC Rose group, because they also raise money for Ramsey. So the, I am, they see me. I knock on their door, they go, I say, "Hi, I'm Robin West, your county..." I know, they interrupt me. They go, "I know who you are." That happens very frequently, and they're pleased. I say, "Hi, I'm running for reelection." "Oh, good." So I've proven who I am, and it's, and I've made myself known.
Well, Robin, I want to thank you for coming in today and chatting with us a little bit, and sharing some of your thoughts and views and opinions with us. So thank you.
Thank you.
I want to remind you that you can always head to northmetrotv.com for our complete Local Decision coverage. It's all right there for you. I've been your host, Ben Hale. We'll see you next time. Thank you for joining us for this Local Decision Candidate Spotlight. I'm Ben Hale, sitting down with Niall Zickman, who's running in for Inoka County Commissioner in District 3. Niall, thank you for being here today.
You bet. Pleasure to be here.
Well, let's just start, and I want to give you a chance to introduce yourself to the viewers and the voters, and then explain to me why you decided to run for this office.
Sure. You bet. So I've been a lifelong resident of the community, 58 years. Been involved in a, in a number of things. I had gone to college, become a woodshop teacher. I had a unfortunate experience, woodshop student teaching, but it worked out fine. I went into a local woodshop with a couple guys, that one was a chemist, one was a battery salesman, and they were starting woodshops. So S&amp;W, when I went there, I was the first employee. When I left, I was, there was 35 employees during the time I was there. I seen the ad in the local newspaper, wanted volunteer firefighters. I thought, you know, that's just the gig for me. So joined the volunteer fire department back in 1982. Married, going on 36 years here in September. One son, Madison. We hosted seven exchange students from around the world, and still keep in contact with six, in fact. We had one of the German students here a week ago, and we've got another one coming in two weeks. Our son is getting married, and so he'll be coming in for that wedding. In the, in the course of the fire department journey, in 1994, I was hired on full-time as a training officer. The chief at the time said he was going to retire in five years. The next year, he said, "I'm retiring now." Competed in a field of 45 national candidates, and came out on top, just retired from that job on May 1st. And in the, in the course of all that, when I was still at the one woodshop, I started two others with some partners, Old Craft and Spectrum Fixtures. Old Craft is still going today, and I was more the business agent and keyed in on getting key employees, help build those things, and illegal. And that kind of, you know, brings us where we are today. I, I knew two years ago, I was going to retire on, about May 1st. It was the 21st anniversary of being chief. There was a number of factors that came into decision there. 21 years as a fire chief is about twice as long as most people do it. We did three cities. I had, so three city councils, a fire board, and an administrator review board. So I had five policy boards, 27 individuals I reported to, and 491 meetings a year that I could go to. And so it was just, just time, and I've always been in public service, and I've just felt, a lot of people complain about the people who are in office, and, you know, who runs? I thought, well, you know, I'm, I'm a homie, born and raised here. A lot of people have recruited me over the years to run for office, the state house, the state senate, the federal. And I had no interest, you know, I was going to run locally in a nonpartisan race, and I thought just my business experience of 35 years, my fire department experience, you know, could bring something a little different, and I could continue serving the public.
So if you are elected, what do you hope to accomplish? Do you have goals, things, ideas in mind, things that you'd like to accomplish for Inoka County if you're elected?
So, again, I'm, I'm a bit of a homie, I was born and raised here in Blaine, and what I see, you know, is we need a champion for the city of Blaine, city of Spring Lake Park. Blaine is now the largest city in Inoka County. It's a very vibrant and growing city, but I've seen, seen it's kind of stagnate. You know, as chief of Spring Lake Park Blaine in Mounds, you, you know, I got to work with those three cities, and, you know, Spring Lake Park is one of the smallest cities, not the smallest, but it's certainly, if you exclude Hilltop, which is kind of unique. You know, you see the challenges those individuals face down there, and, you know, how you solve the problems there. And so, a champion, and then being, you know, in my position, I got a much greater insight into, you know, some of the issues going on with the county, and I think I can take my leadership skills and work to improve everybody's life and tackle that. Everybody wants less government, but they really don't. They want the fire department, they want the police department, they want public works, they want roads, they want libraries. What they want is inefficiencies taken out of government. And I did that at the fire department. I ran the most efficient, effective fire department in the state of Minnesota. So it's not about less government with me, it's all better government, doing those things. We need roads, we need bridges, okay? How are we going to do that? How are we going to pay for them? How are we going to use good business principles to accomplish that?
As you look at Inoka County, is there a most important issue for the county? Is there a number-one thing that is facing the county and maybe this district in particular thing that you, that you see?
If you'll grab me a little latitude, there's two. Inoka County is a quarter-billion-dollar business. $258 million annual budget, 350 that they spend with grants, 1,800 people. That's big business. And so really, the electorate has to say, who wants to be on that board of directors, running a quarter-billion-dollar business? And so it's the combination of bringing that business experience, and that, that's a lot of folks. There's a lot of rooms for efficiencies and improvement there, and then also then just being a champion and having some vision, you know, where are we going to be five years, 10 years, 20 years? I'll give you one example. The five, 10, and 20-year plan for Mindot and the county has nothing, nothing in it to address the issues of the 109th and 65, that one intersection. There's no plan to do any of it. We need some more vision, and just, that's one example. I could give you many.
If you're elected, not everyone will vote for you. Hate to break it to you. Not everyone will vote for you. How would you work to serve everyone, though? How would you work to build some unity around, around, you know, in your district, and really, you know, meet the needs of all the residents?
Sure. So, been outdoor knocking, we passed over 2,345 doors this weekend, and not everybody is going to vote for me. But as I talk to these individuals, I tell them, "I'm going to serve you the same way we did on the fire department." When you called the fire department, we served you. We didn't ask if you're Republican or Democrat. We didn't ask if you're white or black. We didn't ask if you're male or female. We did the best job we could in serving you. I had one lady ask me, "What are you going to do for blind people?" I said, "I'm going to do everything I can." Okay? And so that's all, I'll always put community interests before self-interest. And in that sense, because you're elected to represent, you know, that entire community, and so you'll have to balance that.
When you think about, you know, running for office for the first time, why, why was now the right time? I mean, I know you talked about this a little bit already, but why was now the time for you? After, you know, having all those other opportunities that you mentioned, people talking to you about it before, why was this the time to jump in?
So it was a combination of factors. I'm still young enough that, you know, I still got the energy and the desire and enough time to do some things. Again, 21 years, it was a wonderful job. People say, "Well, you're doing this, you know, because the county commissioner pays $63,000." Well, the fire chief made $125,000 plus benefits, so I'm taking, you know, a pay cut in half, and that's if I win, and I'm spending money to do it. So, you know, it's not about the money, but, you know, that service. And it really, being a fire chief is a great job, and to continue in that, you deny other people those opportunities. There's a trickle-down effect, too, you know, then other people can, you know, move up. And so it would have been incredibly selfish for me to continue, and again, 21 years is a long time. And then that combination, I wanted to do something different, I wanted to serve. I had a number of opportunities in a number of, you know, areas where I got recruited, the superintendent of National Fire Academy accrued me to come and take his job, but it was out in Maryland. I said, "I'm not leaving Minnesota."
When you talk to those people at the door, when you're outdoor knocking, what do you say to them? Why should someone vote for you? Why should they mark your name on the ballot?
So when we can break through, there's a lot of voter apathy out there, there's a lot of voter anger, and there's a lot of people that want to talk about the presidential race, so we have to work through that, because, you know, it's got nothing to do with the county commissioner race. But when I do talk about, when I say it's a quarter-billion-dollar operation with 1,800 employees, and it's a third of your property tax, then that's where we get the engaged discussions, and we talk about what those issues are, we talk about roads and bridges. And you'll need to do that. We talk about some public safety issues, and then inevitably, we always get to the taxes. And I've been also door-knocking on the businesses, too. I've door-knocked on about 20 of those, and most of them won't get to vote, but they're paying a lion's share of the taxes. And so then we talk about that better government. I say, "If you want less government, I can do that. Let's just eliminate public works, we can get rid of the sheriff, we can get rid of the county." "Well, no, no." And then I talk about some of the things that I did at SPM. And so for, you know, Blaine citizens, their budget was 1.8 million. Any similar-sized department in the state, it's double that. You know, and how did we do that? Blaine's own citizen survey showed we had the highest quality ranking of 26 services, and the most essential services. So you can do better government, deliver those services that you, you want and value, and do it more efficiently, using good prevention principles, good leadership principles.
Well, Niall, thanks for coming in, talking with us a little bit, sharing some of your views with us and introducing yourself to the voters. Thank you for taking the time today.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I appreciate it very much.
All right. Well, I've been your host, Ben Hale, here on this North Metro TV Candidate Spotlight. Remember, you can head to northmetrotv.com where you can see any of our local decision coverage, including candidate biographies, other spotlights like this one, they're all available there for you to watch. We'll also have election results, both on primary, August 9th, and the general election in November. I've been your host again, Ben Hale. Thank you for watching.